Thank you, everybody, for being in our meeting. We'll start the meeting off with a roll call to establish a forum, starting with John.
I am here.
Jen?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
And Nicole?
Present.
And I am here as well. We, Nicole has the meeting appropriately noticed?
Yes, ma'am, it has.
Okay, I'll start by reading our equity statement. Each student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income. And our mission statement is each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. And if we can take a look at the agenda, are there any questions about tonight's agenda? It is very short. Shh. I know, that's not jinxing it, though, without any sense of disrespect.
It's just a factual statement.
There's some things to talk about in here.
So, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some.
A motion from Joe, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Nicole, all in favor signify with aye.
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 The agenda has been approved. Chad, you are filling in tonight as our superintendent in residence. Can you kick us off with the superintendent's update?
Absolutely. Well, first we've got, as a part of this superintendent's update, and then I think some board action, we have a welcome and the swearing-in of Corby White.
Yes.
Corby was here last week at a special meeting and selected by the board. So certainly, welcome, Corby, on behalf of the district, the community, and certainly, I believe, your new board colleagues. Thank you for your willingness to jump into this work and serve our school. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It's great to have you. I think we have a few things that we have to do
Yes.
as far as official procedure here.
So you've got the administrative welcome, you've got the board's welcome.
It's really good to have.
Last time.
Thank you for doing so.
And we are going to do the swearing-in, so it's the, um, for, on record. Okay, Nicole.
Awesome. And Corby, if you can just repeat after me. I, Corby White.
I, Corby White.
Having been appointed to the office of?
Having been appointed to the office of?
Verona area school board member-at-large.
Verona area school board member-at-large.
Swear or affirm that I will support?
Swear or affirm that I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially?
And will faithfully and impartially?
Discharge the duties of said office?
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Yay! So, welcome aboard. Corby, we now officially have a full board once again. And with that, Corby, we look forward to getting to know you and for our community to get to know you over the next few meetings. So, Chad, I'm gonna turn it back to you for our superintendent's report.
Yeah, as Meredith stated, the superintendent's report in particular is, I think, probably as short as we've had since I've been in the district. So, no results policies tonight, either set indicators or actually go through our initial iteration of handing those over to the board. And we just have a few, a few things we wanted to discuss tonight, and it should not take long at all. So, to start, this is our first full board meeting since the November 8th election. So, I wanted to take the opportunity to review with the board, I'm sure they've seen it, the final results, but start with a huge thank you. Thank you to the school board for all you did to make sure that our community was as informed and involved as possible along the way. And I don't, until you actually get into the work of leading up to the writing of a referendum question, and then eventually all it takes to make sure that, that folks have what they need by the time they head to the ballot, it kind of takes over everything we do for a half a year period of time. It did that again, and we're certainly immensely thankful to the community with the resounding yes vote that we saw as a, as a, as a result. With Marcy in the room, I wanted to make sure, Marcy was a key piece to all of this. In particular, an operating referendum is really all about communication. We had to do all of the hard work upfront to make sure we knew what numbers needed to be in place and make sure we had the right question. And after that was set, it was three and a half, four months of nonstop work related to our one-person communications department. So, Marcy, a heartfelt thank you, and I know our community thanks you as well for all the work that went into getting us in November 8th.
As does the board.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Chad, if I can interrupt you for a moment, I also, on behalf of the board, just want to thank you and Pete, because the other important part outside of communication is the numbers, too. And all of the work that you two did was really fantastic, and we super appreciate you coming here and explaining it to us over and over and over again.
Yes.
And all the work and hours that you put in. So, thanks you for coming here aboard, we appreciate it.
Without a doubt. I certainly appreciate the thanks, and, yeah, the, it's interesting, we have, we had a group of business directors, actually, we hosted on Friday, from Dane County to the Dane County area, many of which recently passed a referendum. Now, the, the work is still hard, it just, it changes. Now, we have, the community has trusted this group to, to manage new spending authority. And we have to deliver on that, that new permission that we've got, and it is, we'll have easier budgets to discuss in the future with the permission that we've got, but we'll still have difficult decisions to make and discussions to have. So, yeah, certainly thankful that we have a new problem, and that's, that, the problem is making sure that, that every penny is spent to do the right work for, for our district. So, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, truly heartfelt thanks, we know that you put in
Yeah.
extraordinary hours on this.
We did, absolutely. We did want to share the results. We were one decimal point away from getting to 70%. The old football coach and Dr. Clarity and myself certainly would have loved to have us get to 70%, but it was, like I said, a resounding yes from our community. This was, this was, I believe, for sure in our area, not the state, the, the biggest, you know, the biggest supportive vote in terms of an operating referendum that the state had. So that's, that was pretty spectacular in terms of votes that turned out. Related to the past referendum, we had a very busy week last week, in particular in HR and payroll, we just wanted to make sure the board was aware of all the work happening behind the scenes. So, as promised, we notified our employees of all of their new salaries. Communication went out the very next morning, and then follow-up communication regarding that 4.7% cost of living increase. And all of the new salaries were, the folks were notified regarding what their new pay increase would be, and now all of the future job postings. So Rochelle had actually held off a few openings that came up just prior to the referendum, was hopeful it would pass, and then we were able to update new salary information and new postings going forward. We've updated our website and all the associated documents as well. So Rochelle and that, that small but mighty team have done absolutely outstanding jobs there. There's been some behind-the-scenes systems update, so we've updated all the salary tables and make sure that we've got money built in the budget to pay everyone's salary and benefits for the year. As of November 25th, the first payroll will go out with all those new salaries. We're working on calculating the retro pay we discussed. All of our hourly staff will have their salaries increased on November 28th. And that, you know, I can tell you, Dr. Clarity, and I know our principals have received, you know, heartfelt thank you for, in many cases, our hourly staff, the, you know, it's life-changing to get, to get an increase like that. And instead of them having to peek around for additional employment opportunities elsewhere, or maybe that second job they were considering, this is a really big deal for our hourly folks. And then lastly, the process for payroll and all the final salaries for the new CPI increase will go on the paycheck on December 8th. So, HR and payroll have been super busy, super busy.
Chad, do we know yet when that retro pay will get paid out?
Yeah, so the retro pay checks, I think, actually go out the, I think, the same payroll or the following week of December 8th. So it will happen before the holidays, it will happen in the month of December. There, there's a complicated tax and benefits, and everyone has their own story. So I think HR, they can't just press process on 900 employees. I think every individual needs to look back and scrutinize to make sure the right amounts being withheld and get all that in place. So, they've done an amazing job, it will happen before the holidays.
Good, that was my question, thank you.
Yep. And I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of, you get a little break from the Chad and Pete show, but, but it won't be too long. So, we will be back at our next, I think will be our next board meeting, December 5th, and we will have OE6 to go through, and our associated audit is due back. We'll be able to go through that with the board and present to the board and everything associated with OE6. And then December and January, we really start to already look ahead to next school year. So, our staffing review and our team internally has continued to go through not only what's possible with some of the new flexibility built into that past referendum, but continuing to scrutinize the positions and the people that we have currently working in our school district to make sure they're doing the right work. So lots of times, it's this time of, time of year where if there are staff position changes or shuffling from building to building, we're starting to get an eye on that. And there's, there's heavy work to do around the master schedule, in particular, our middle school and high school. So, and lots of moving pieces as far as the nominal effect. Transportation alone, I went, you know, I talked to the board maybe two months ago, a month and a half ago, around transportation. So we've had initial meetings with Badger Bus to consider going back to double looping, which would be a really big deal for all of our schools. You know, I was frank with the school board, I think our high school gets out too late, and I think our elementary schools start to work. So, so that, we're, we're working, it's, we're hopeful that Badger's gonna be in a position with many of the things they've done around driver hiring, that they will be, be able to give us a commitment that we can pursue going back to double looping, which would be a really good thing for our, for our district as a whole. And there are master scheduling and start time implications with transportation, that's where it all starts.
Do we have an anticipation about the win that they might have, be able to commit to stepping for the living?
I, I think within the month.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, we had a meeting with Badger here two weeks ago, essentially put them on notice that we want to move back in this direction. And they are working behind the scenes to make sure that they would have the drivers to do it. And then Michael Account, who's amazing, who works on the operations team, is working with Badger to actually put together a mock schedule of the students in the routes we have this year, which is a lot of work into a double loop, to make sure we know how many buses we would need if we were running a double loop this year. Once that's done, we'll get together with our academic services team and start to talk about bell schedules and school day length, and then get back with the Badger team and make sure we can pull it off. But it's a, we're, we're very hopeful we can do it.
Okay, great, yeah. And then, parents would be given plenty of heads-up, that type of timeline, doesn't it?
Yeah, for the, today, giving Marcy kudos for the second time today. We got our 23-24 calendar out to families last week, which was earlier than normal. Marcy and Dr. Clarity had lots of kudos for getting that out as early as they did. And we told families likely later this winter or early spring, bell times would be out. But that, that's a, there's more work to do there, and what we don't want to do is put together a bell schedule and find out that we don't have transportation to back it up and then have to change it. But we're, we're hopeful within the next couple of months, all of that will start to be ironed out, which will be great.
Thank you. Hey, Chad, is this something you would have considered without the referendum?
No, probably not, yeah. We, we built transportation, double-loop transportation into the passing referendum scenario. And if we would have pushed hard on this with a failed referendum, it would have, we would have had to make a budget adjustment, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a big deal, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think it's great for our voters to understand what their vote means, and they could have just bought their kiddos some extra sleep and some extra release time, right?
For sure.
And so I think it's nice for voters to understand what they've done to help us out then.
Without a doubt, yep. Yeah, it, you, you forget in a hurry that it, no, no, no pun intended, it, it drives our whole school year, what we can, what we can pull out of transportation. Yep, and our families have been amazing in understanding the triple loop this past year, but I think we'd like to move back to more recent school start times and sort of things to do.
But I've got a little question of something earlier in the shared timeline about the staffing review, I'm assuming that means FTE calculations and moving, I'm just curious from a process standpoint about who's involved in the conversations, you know, if that's school-based leadership teams, or how that sort of, like, district-wide dialogue happens when I'm sure there's this tug and pull of schools feeling like they could use more FTE and how the, the weighing of the variables, I guess, in terms of staffing and management.
Yeah, certainly, there, there's no perfect way to, to go through that process. I think having strong school-based leadership teams that are very informed around what's happening with the master schedule and the why behind decisions that you're making. We hold monthly principal meetings, so we've already helped January 18th to start to have a better idea of where FTE will land. And then our directors and academic services team will have to be working hand-in-hand with the budget office and human resources with the available allocation that we've got. And, you know, I, I think even the discussion item later that we've got around the district equity statement, it continues to be important to ground our staffing decisions in our current student data, and making sure that we're making decisions as a district to put the resources where they're needed the most. Yeah, but I, I shared with a few members today, just, I was here Friday, and in my short time here Friday, you know, I, I was with John Bremer, who explained, you know, we're, we're currently cleaning this building at 59,000 square feet per district, which is a lot. And there's, there, shh. If we had all the resources in the world, we'd consider, and we may, adding some money to the operations budget. I go down and I meet with Deb in, in the Aquatic Center, who explains it's really, there was potentially some promises made the last referendum around staffing the net attorney during the day, which is really difficult. And go down, and while we're talking to the board about this, I meet with Joel, who explains that our coaches haven't had a raise in 10 years in this district. And that, if, and that we haven't even begun discussions around really full class sizes at the middle school, and taking a look at, making sure that we're properly staffing and have the appropriate teacher prepped at the high school, and continue to look at class sizes at the, at the elementary school. So it's a, it's a huge team effort, and it'll be important for our principals to continue to be really involved and understand why, yeah. But I think, I think this is where you started. We also have to continue to take a look at making sure that, you know, I, you know, from, from my seat, continue to talk with our team about how important it is not just to continue to layer on FTE onto existing systems without examining the systems you have. That can, that's the easy thing to do, we just, you know, another layer of frosting. But making sure, and sometimes it, you have to develop a two, three, five-year plan to decide, maybe there's positions that should be phased out or repurposed, or maybe there are places we've been spending too much allocation that we can pull back a little bit, maybe places that we're just, we've been underfunding forever that need additional resources, and just continue to look at it every year.
Well, and even circling something that you offered when it came to busing, is even how we schedule our days, what do our structures, what do our bell schedules look like, and what, you know, what iterations of that can help sort of feed and support, you know, different things that we want to do for kids and understand.
Yes, our, our high school staff, since we had, since we began late start Mondays, have continued to wonder about the possibility of district-wide late start Mondays, where currently we can't do that at the secondary because of instructional minutes. We have another chance to go through that again this winter, to see if that's doable. Yeah, lots of work with lots of interchangeable and connected pieces. Yep, all good questions. Then we will be back with the board and start to do budget forecasting. I've shared the state timeline with the board, we, we won't know what the next biennial budget will look like through this summer, but now that we've got additional spending authority, essentially the board has been given a state budget for the next three, four, five, six years, for us to manage now. Anything additional we get from the state will allow us to continue to stretch out that $19 million of spending authority into the future. We will definitely have our eye on categorical and equalization aid numbers. Anything more we get in the aid pot means that that is money that we would not have to pass on to our taxpayers. So that'll be really important. But if we get increase per people, that also means that we don't have to use the $19 million as quickly as we may have to, as we have to kind of continue to work back and forth with the, the decisions we have to make. So that will be, we'll have a forecast in January, staffing workbooks will be released to schools in February, so we've got a matter of three months to make sure we've got the right FTE put into place, again, action transportation as a master schedule, go hand-in-hand, we end up doing with staffing. And then, early in the spring, we do our first mass posting, vacancies we're expecting for the following school year, happens quickly.
This is what I was thinking, you, Marcy, the rest of the administration, very nice break.
Yeah.
Done, over, back in it, okay.
Yeah, I think from afar, people think you, you work on the budget for like, a, a month in the fall and stamp it, it's year-round, yeah, the, the budget is, is year-round. As quickly as you pass one, you're already peeking and starting, starting the next one. But that's certainly the nature of the work. We have next, two more quick updates. So, we have, Dr. Clarity wanted to make sure we got this out, out into the public, and I believe there'll be some, some more public postings related to this. We've got some important dates ahead of us. So December 1st, as far as Board of Education, December 1st is the earliest date that we can circulate nomination papers. Jen, are you involved in this? Is this you?
I would be Nicole.
Nicole, used to be Jen.
Used to be me, so I'm happy to be mentor and support.
Yes, yes.
So, December 1st, we can start to circulate nomination papers. Between the 1st and the 3rd, candidates have to follow, have to file the following items, campaign registration, declaration of candidacy, and nomination papers. And the 23rd is the deadline to have all of that put together for the spring elections. I want to make sure everyone knew that. Board members who have to go through this.
Having done this a bajillion times, we want to make sure, circulation of papers can't be any earlier than December 1st. You have until January 3rd to do them.
Yes.
But you want to make sure you get them in maybe a little bit before that, because it is not uncommon for some signatures to not be accepted. You want to either have time to get additional signatures, or you just don't want to be turning it in at 5 o'clock on the 3rd, because if there's anything that needs to be fixed, you're out of time. So, the 1st of December to January 3rd. Incumbents, if there is non-candidate, if incumbents aren't going to run again December 23rd, that I'm certainly hoping that does not relevant. And so if there's any questions, you know, please, people can reach out to me or Jen or Nicole, happy to help. And I think we can get, you know, I think there's, it, there's a process, there's quite a bit of stuff that seems like there's a lot to do, but it can be streamlined quickly.
Thank you to Vance and Ms. Stanley, because I'm sure you will be helping us also, and we greatly appreciate that. And just to remind everyone, the deadlines are hard, they're not ours, these are state, statewide. Yeah, so there's no room for flexibility.
There is no room for flexibility, yeah.
Okay. And lastly, for the superintendent's report, just our next few board meetings. So we, we, here we sit tonight, we meet twice in December, and those are back-to-back meetings, so we'll see you on the 5th, and that's where OE6 will take place, begin on the 12th, and then, I think, we're working on scheduling, I think I just heard some type of Google poll going out
Yes.
to try to nail down a board treaty date.
Yes, January feels far away, sadly.
It's not.
It's not.
So.
I'm booked up till then.
Okay. That sounds good. Is there any, anything else from the superintendent's report?
That's all we have.
Any questions from the board?
I will just comment again, as has been commented, because I did spend a lot of time, election night and thereafter, looking at referendums all over the state, and ours did pass, if not the widest margin, certainly close to it, I think it was actually the widest margin statewide, which speaks to, you know, the community's support, which, which I'm very grateful for, but it also speaks to, I think, the work that your team did in coming up with a budget that has an ask that is reasonable, and continuing to work the numbers so that the mill rate on the taxes went down in a pretty significant way, so that, I, you know, the people that I've talked to, that this was something they're happy to support, because it was very well reasoned out, it was a very reasonable request, and, yeah, and I just really appreciate the time and repeated effort by both of your teams to get that message out there, and, yeah, so.
Just to add what, to what John's saying, I think the margin also speaks to the fact that we identified early on that our biggest challenge with this was communicating that this operating referendum did not come with a corresponding tax increase, and I think judging by the, that margin, we, we did that. And also, I mean, that was what we found talking to people in the community, too, that message got out there. So you guys did a very good job, not only of setting up a situation where there was no tax increase, but in communicating that message effectively to the public.
And one of the other things that I wanted to add in commenting on this is that, as I was kind of looking around the state, you know, over the past year or so, there have been over $2 billion in ask from schools across the state. While the state sits on a $4 billion surplus, like, that's not a coincidence.
I think it's actually higher.
Six, four, six.
$6 billion?
It's gone up, yeah.
Yeah, it's equally. Yeah, John, I got, I got an update this afternoon. There'll be a press release tomorrow morning, $6.6 billion.
$6.6 billion, not a coincidence, and I think people realize that, you know, this is not an unreasonable thing, that money has been withheld.
Not an unreasonable thing from school districts' perspectives. Unreasonable, correct, in other.
In other ways.
And then how, what will that play out to look like?
So thank you again for your, yeah, work, absolutely.
And I also think that a number that size isn't just a financial approval. I mean, I hopefully can maybe anecdotally draw that that feels like the community is also in support of the direction that our district is going, is philosophically on board, is trusting of the work that's being done. So I took that as an anecdotal side note to the financial pieces and just the overall approach, I believe, in this district.
To tag on to that, like, I, I agree, I think it really speaks to the, the trust that's been built over the last year and a half or so. I realize, you know, some hard times through the pandemic, and the transparency that the administration's run things with, in communicating this and in other issues that have come up, has really built up a wellspring's trust, that I think that you rightfully point out. So thank you again. Thank you, Dr. Clarity.
Okay, so thank you for the superintendent's report.
Absolutely.
We're gonna move on to, next item is discussion of our equity statement. So just to kind of preface this, I know we have some questions, and there's been discussions between board members, from community members, from staff members. Our equity statement, I'm so glad we have an equity statement. However, I think we all know that there is maybe some incomplete aspects to this equity statement. At this point, this is not up for board action tonight, it is simply just a discussion, so we as a board can talk through it. Again, it's not an action, it's discussion. We also know that as the strategic process goes through its, its whole process, the strategic plan goes through its whole process, at the end of that, there will be something brought to the board that is an updated equity statement that is coherent with the strategic plan. However, we have this interim time, and I think as we've said, when you know better, you do better. And we are in a limbo place of what, what do we do? Again, I want to, having an equity statement in and of itself is critical. And, so that's where we're at, we're kind of at the and part. So Jen, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
No, I think you said it well about this sort of interim space, right? That the process that's happening through strategic planning with the multitude of voices and perspectives being brought through that process, that the equity statement that will be shared eventually, I hope will be reflective and something that we can really get behind as a board, but between today and whenever that point comes for the new equity statement, I think that's where I'm at too, is just what do we do with that? And just having heard from a lot of various folks around our district and community, kind of wondering the same thing. So yeah, just, I think we're all, at least I feel like I'm in contemplation mode and I appreciate the discussion space because I certainly don't have anything to offer as a solution, but just curious what everybody else might be thinking.
I would agree with that. Jen, do you have anything from kind of the administrative point of view, or do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I know I'm certainly reiterating things I've heard Dr. Clarity say, that a, an equity statement isn't about making sure that you have the appropriate number of commas built into it in terms of, oh, we missed something. It's, it's more about beliefs and what's most important is actions. And, you know, I was having this conversation with Meredith before we started the meeting. There is almost something built into an equity statement that inherently means it's going to change again, that even if we get through the strategic planning process and the board passes a new equity statement, we feel better because we learned from this one. It's not the last one. I'm not calling John Bremer up to chisel this into the walls of the high school. Equity work is about continuing to learn about yourself and others. And it's never finished. We're not going to stamp it when it's done. We're certainly have expectations that all of the community voice and school voice we've heard through the strategic planning process and what we've learned from this statement makes the next iteration better. But the work's done. So we're excited for the next iteration, but I know that we all have equity work to do in our own personal journey, and that will continue as of this.
So kind of open it up to the board. This is truly just discussion time. Where are we at?
Yeah, I'll share my view on this. Yeah, I think it makes sense, what we've been saying up till now, which is we're going through this strategic planning process, and the outcome of that is going to be potentially an updated version of an equity statement. But at the same time, if you look at things that are going on both nationwide and locally, I, I think it's important that we not wait to make some effort to show the LGBTQ community that we support them and including them in an equity statement. It's largely symbolic, but symbols do matter when it comes to inclusivity and students and staff feeling welcome. So I don't know whether it needs to be updating in the interim, like just adding gender identity and sexual orientation into our equity statement, or if there's some other way we can do to show that support. But I do think that it's important to do something to demonstrate to that community that, or to our community as a whole, that this board supports the LGBTQ community, both our students and our staff.
To tag on to Joe's statement, I couldn't see any framework work that we do negating that, right? I couldn't see us going into framework. I could see us going into that work and maybe coming up with either more inclusive or more language that flows a bit better in the statement, to which, again, to Jen's point, I would say then let's update it. Right, we're not, we're not talking about chiseling this into, into stone. So I would agree with Joe in that we definitely, if this statement means something to students and it's saying you are not included in this statement, I would feel terrible. And so gender, identity, sexual orientation, whatever phrase or phrases we include to add, I, I think should be done sooner rather than later and leaving it open to that being updated with the framework.
John, do you have?
I do have some thoughts on this.
I imagine.
I agree with where Dr. Clarity's coming from, Jen, as you shared it, and I don't want to speak for him in his absence, but I agree with the position that these sorts of statements run a certain danger when it becomes a contest of how many commas you can add. Because it gets away from the meaning of the statement, which is really about giving the educational rigors that we need regardless of the historical biases that we inherit as a community, and the systemic biases that we inherit. And then the focus of these statements should be less about creating all of these categories and more about explaining how equity is going to run through this organization and how we're going to address some of the inequities that we inherited. And that's really what it's about. It's about confronting the systemic biases and economic inequities and social inequities that have been created for us over hundreds of years, often intentionally, but often today felt unintentionally, but still felt quite a bit. And I would hope that that sort of sentiment of focus on the action of equity, unless the categorization of people that we feel are aggrieved by the inequitable processes that exist today, I would hope that that focus would run through the strategic planning and result in a statement that is differently focused than this one at the end of that process. But that's not my thing to manage. Here though, we've got a bunch of commas. And, and I agree that to not say something about sexual agenda, sexual identity here in light of the powerful biases that are revealing themselves in action today, I mean, every community is something that really ought to be fixed immediately. So I think that that's important. But again, I don't think that we should be trying to list everything. And that's not because it doesn't exist. It's because it makes people feel like they don't exist if they're not categorized and listed. And so it's about asking the question that invites everybody to see themselves in the statement. And that's what I hope happens.
I would agree with that, John. I think especially as we're, you know, looking to find a better statement that truly encompasses, you know, the equity that we want to infuse into our school, the comma list is going to hopefully not be continued. And yet, the comma list is what we have right now. And to not, to not recognize that and to continue to not name especially a group of, a group of individuals who is truly, as Joe pointed out, here in our community and nationwide, experiencing significant viewpoints.
I don't need to interrupt her.
Oh.
Ah, but, but I will now that I've been invited to interrupt. Sorry. This is like, I'm talking to the man. Anyway, I'm interrupting the man. I think in this particular case, it's particularly poignant that the battles that are waged over creating more inequities are about omitting from existence any mention of people that have different sexual identities. So leaving them off the list feels more urgent because of that relationship. I forgot what else I was gonna say.
Because that was very important.
What's that? Oh, the other thing I was gonna say is oftentimes these discussions around equity and opportunity are rooted in kind of childish assumptions that we have about this being a zero-sum game, that if somebody's listed, then somebody else must be left out. If somebody gets an opportunity, then that's not the case for somebody else. Because after all, there's only 24 hours in the day, there's only so much budget, so you must be taking from someone else. And I think we need to really acknowledge through this sort of statement that that's simply not true, that in so many cases that are backed up by evidence, a rising tide does lift all boats. The problem historically is that that argument has been used to lift the best boats first with the assumption that the other boats will come up along with it. And in actuality, the evidence shows that if you work hard to raise the least of those, that then all, all boats arise. And that's, and that's really something that's important to get out there for talking about messaging. This is not about a zero-sum game. We're talking about creating acceptance and safety and ultimately opportunity for our kids. And the more we recognize where our kids that are most threatened are being threatened, the better we're making it for all of our kids. And, and just like when you make the hallways and the streets more accessible for students in wheelchairs, people trick less often, you know? It's the same thing. And so all of this is for me to say that there is a profound philosophical argument here around this, that we should really get at the heart of, that this is not a zero-sum game. But also, this is me saying that I feel a certain amount of urgency about this. So yeah, and I'm done.
So when I look at this, I think back to, I mean, this is, you know, we did not have an equity statement, mind your own board. So the fact that there's an equity statement that we open every meeting with, to me, is our signal to our greater community and to our, our district community that this is a priority for us, this is what matters, this is something that we believe in, and we as a board are united in our beliefs on this. I also want to make sure that we are all aware that this could be viewed as performative if we are not enacting the policies and making sure that we are working to actually infuse equity in decisions into every aspect of our district. So this is a statement, this isn't going to change except for, John, what you said. If somebody is not seeing themselves here, that feels like an erasure. And I think right now, we do have a, we know better. So to continue to leave it as is feels intentional then. We have an interim period of time. Again, I don't want, our equity statement is not our performative piece, and then we are done with equity, we walk away. So I think this is where crafting the perfect equity statement means so very little if we aren't doing anything more. And if this is our starting piece and it's already causing hurt, we need to address it so it can be a better equity statement in the long run. So we have an interim period. Cory?
I know I'm the new guy here, but I have to say this. I know Tamra serves on the parents advisory group.
Yes, sir.
We actually took a look at the equity statement. Parents want to see it expanded. And so the commas that we have there, I'm going to be the contrarian here, they want to see more commas. They want to see inclusion of LGBTQ. They want to see, you know, it expanded. That was the basic gist of their, hey, add more to this, that would detract from it. But I get the point. We want to quote unquote simplify it to make it all inclusive so that we get rid of the commas. But I'm saying, when parents took a look at this, they want to see comma and, comma and, and, and if this thing gets blown up, we're included, it's a living document. We can always change it, alter it, amend it, add to it. But I throw that out there just to say, what we're saying here tonight is not the impression I got when discussing it with the parents group. And I don't know if I'm, if Tamra, if you remember that discussion at all or not.
Cory, I think that is super valuable. I think that's very helpful also to, for us to remember at the board table, that this is going to be a, a statement that is crafted through our community, through our staff and through our student voices, and then eventually brought to us. So what we may sit here as, you know, six tonight with seven minds, what we may think is best will not be representative of all of the voices in our district, which is why I see great value in waiting to have a new equity stop statement crafted through that process because what we think is not the end, the end of the statement for our district. Maybe that's really important to point out. And it also kind of highlights, again, what we don't want to keep doing is adding commas, but maybe that's really less important than adding the commas to make sure people feel seen.
I think it's, that's a perfect thing to bring to the board table of like, I have other data points that mark these seven people. So yes, please always do that. And I, I do think it highlights, in the meantime, if students are asking for it and parents are asking for it, maybe it's worth adding now so that we help and we avoid any hurt that this statement is causing while acknowledging that we feel like there's a better overarching way to allow it to live and breathe or actually do some, ask again in some of the parent groups and some of the student focus groups from now until April. What do you guys feel about coming up with some mock language, right? Like, like John has laid out and saying, do you feel more seen with the commas than all of these nouns?
And the whole process will come to us.
Exactly. So I, I think it's actually like a both. I think it's okay to take action now to include words that we know will help reduce hurt and say, let's also let the framework process take place and be really thoughtful about, well, parents, which one resonates better with you? Students, which one resonates better with you?
Well, and not to get too pedantic on the wording, but I think when we're talking about a list, the way it's phrased right now, it's phrased as an exhaustive list. It says, these are the criteria on which we are not going to be discriminating against anyone, which is far different than saying, including but not limited to, here are some examples, but we're not going to discriminate based on anything. So that's one of the reasons.
There will always be missing something.
Right.
There will always be.
And that's one of the reasons that it feels so exclusionary to not have them listed is because of the way it's phrased. So I hope that the end result down the road is that that issue is fixed. But again, I think there's an urgency, like John said, that there are people who are feeling excluded right now today because of this.
So if I could just take, just, I think hearing the comments, yes, John?
I'm sorry, I just want to push back a little bit. And Cory, I'm so glad you're here and bringing that up because it makes me think. And here's my thought. One of the reasons that bodies like this tend to get nothing done and that parent groups, focus groups come up with ideas that don't actually affect change is because we muddle things. And then you look around and all these places have like diversity, equity, and inclusion statements. And that's kind of what this is. Is it diversity? Is it equity or is it inclusion? It's labeled as an equity statement, but what we're debating is an inclusion statement, right? And that gets lost because now we're trying to categorize, talk about all these groups. And we're not talking about the system so that the actual organization of, of opportunities and power that exists to keep recreating inequities. And so I realize, I understand, but what I'm saying is I agree with Nicole that we need to do something about where we're at with commas now. But my hope is that through the strategic planning process, we're parsing out that is this an equity statement? Is it an inclusion statement? And what, when we talk about equity, what do we want to mean? What are the systems that we want to change regardless of the inclusive statement that's going to have like a more exhaustive list or whatever? And so, so I just want to say that, I'm sorry. We can go.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. What I want to make sure from the board standpoint is that we're taking the action that is the board action. And then that we're going to make sure that everyone else is doing, you know, we're not doing work that is others' work. Crafting the next statement that resides with the strategic planning group and, and the voices, and that is going to be a very. And that is going to be a very large and inclusive group. And I think that is for the best. What we are, you know, I think the equity, the way that we want to see equity infused throughout all of the, that's our administration is coming to us with those amazing things. We, our job is to support and not stand in the way of that. And then our job tonight is, we read this every night, it is built into our policy. Do we want to change it? And I wanted, so what I wanted to do, kind of is just to get an informal sense from the board. And what I, my informal sense seems to be fairly unanimous across the six individuals here, that we see that there is a, there feels like an exclusion by not calling it out in naming gender identity and sexual orientation. We see that, we recognize it, and to do nothing about it feels intentionally harmful. Is that fair?
Very much.
Yeah. So, knowing that and recognizing that, I think then if, with the board's blessing, and I will talk to Dr. Clarity, Jen and I can, we'll meet with him at our next board meeting. We'll have maybe some additional updated language that will be an interim possibility. And that would be the unofficial direction that the board would like to move. Is that fair?
Without weighing in or limiting what the strategic framework works?
Yes, this is strictly from now until the strategic plan, yes.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Comfortable with that as a direction. Okay, thank you, everybody. I think that's an important conversation to have. I think it's been weighing on all of us in different ways, and it needs to just be spoken about here. Okay, so with that, next on the agenda, if we're able to move on, we have a communicated community.
Yep. Ironically, I can't say that. No, CC. I was putting update in our acronym there. So our communications team admittedly was on a tad of a hiatus during referendum time.
Understandable.
But we have regrouped and regathered, and thanks to the input that all of you had shared and admin and leadership, you know, kind of in the weeks prior, we have finalized sort of initial draft of key communicators and thought leaders. And Marcy has drafted an initial sort of invitation email, so we're hoping the Monday after this long weekend to blast out initial invitations to folks to participate in key communicators groups and thought leader groups, group meetings. Yeah, that, so just to see what we get from responses. And then our hope is perhaps then, from a timing standpoint, that when we have a board workshop in January, we could collectively sort of think about what kind of questions we may want to use in those first go-rounds with those groups. Get some thoughts from all of you as a board about just what would it look like then to host? And just to try to put some commitment behind the invite, we are including a doodle poll right away with some dates at the very end of January, first week of February, to see, you know, yes, I'll be in your key communicator group, and I can come on these dates, just to kind of get a feel for times of day, people's interest and availability.
Fantastic, okay. Thank you. The timing of that is appreciated how it is. I know it doesn't feel like it's almost January, but yes, we have a very hectic next few weeks.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
When we first started this, I was more concerned with how we create systemic like logistics for how we do outreach and communicate as a board. And I remember how some of that process played out with this notion of key communicators and that. But what I'm really anxious to get to is kind of an organized, this is how we do outreach in a way so that we're not tripping over ourselves. This is how we communicate with people so they feel like they're getting their information, referendums withstanding about where the districts are at, where the districts at. And so, I don't know if I just want to like sit in on the meetings, or if it's, I'm assuming that that's not where you guys are at yet.
No, right. I think that's a good thing to bring up on the board retreat. Because I think now that like, not saying that the key communicator and the thought leader group is done, but I think we can focus on, to Jen's point, what type of questions we want to ask, and then talk about the next topic for the group to take up. Because I was kind of with you of like, how do we come up with a schedule? We put together a whole flow chart of like, who answers what and when? And we were like, hold on, let's focus on these kind of key focus groups, but then get at more of the operational and intentional communication and focus. So we haven't gotten there because we wanted to focus on the key communicators and thought leaders. But I think that could absolutely be our next step. And we just need to get really clear about what that deliverable looks like. So I agree with you.
So do you guys have a meeting between now and January?
So first with the committee meetings, if we have more than three, then we have a form and we tip into other meetings. So I want to make sure that we're keeping, you know, our committees. I also want to make sure that we're going to be kind of using the committee to get our key communicators and our thought leaders group kicked off. I think that is fantastic. Maybe at our board meeting, then we kind of talk about, do we want to continue to use the communication committee as a vehicle, or do we want to move it back into board work?
Oh, yeah.
Because I think at the time, when we talked about using the committee, and remember, this is the, we've abolished committees for the most part. But the key to, and the reason for abolishing committees was that we tended to have silos of information. And it's not the board work, it's board members, right, you know? So as we are looking to what's next for communications, is this a test that resides with a committee? Or do we now bring it back? Because we had a lot going on last year.
I retract, I understand that, that's better.
Well, and I think the distinction maybe being, you know, I feel like there was a little bit of worker bee, like to this process of yes communicators and thought leaders, that like, a few of us were the worker bees that just did kind of logistical things behind the scenes. It was less philosophical, it was less broad board communication. We just were trying to put these groups together and got insight, but I think we just did a lot of just working and tasking. Which feels like okay for a committee versus something that's more broad, all of us discussion about how are we holistically moving forward in terms of broad communication with the community at large versus some of these other spaces that, you know, through some of the trainings that we've had was an encouraging kind of first step in terms of outreach as a board to folks.
So I would like to thank, you know, you two and Christina as well, for you really have put in a lot of work to kind of get a structure for us to kick off with.
And Marcy. Yeah. Marcy, you're just the star.
Yeah, really.
Wow.
But I think we do, we circle that at possibly that board retreat and figure out how do we as a board want to report? Because I quite frankly really enjoyed the not committee structure.
Yeah.
I feel like I know more about things like finance, that because, I mean, just things that, having done things two different ways, I see where there's things like, kind of some busier work that can be handled off meeting. But I'm not sure that that's the best.
But we don't want to exclude opinions and thoughts.
Yes, right, absolutely.
Can I ask a couple of questions about this? And they're not going to be well-formed, because this was also long ago, I kind of even forgot. And you guys have probably already thought of these. But as you're talking about sending out emails out to those groups that we identify, is there a concern, or I kind of have a concern about the messaging being important? Because otherwise, it can give the message to the community that we think some people's opinions are more valuable than other people's, which is definitely not the case, that's not what we're doing. But I think, I think the messaging of that initial reach out is so important in that regard. And the second is whether we're prepared for what to do when someone tells someone who's not on that list, and they email us and say, yeah, I'd like to be a part of that.
Which is also clearly, you can't send a substitute, so yeah. And we, thankfully, Marcy is helping draft some of that language of what that invitation will be. So, thank you for the.
I figured you guys had already thought of it.
No, but that's really helpful to hear out loud again, to just things to be cautious and mindful of.
I just want to put out there before our January thing, where I'm coming from, so it's not like surprising in January when I come in, that I am much more interested in creating channels or pathways for people to communicate with us. And this notion of like thought leaders and communication leaders has changed with me from the beginning, so I'm kind of antagonistic towards it. And I just want to throw that out there, I don't expect any sort of response, but I just, again, don't want to walk in on January and be like, ah! And I'm like, where did this come from? But that's also because I'm a part of the committee, so I'm not informed about it there. So yeah.
So when you are ready to send out emails, would you like CC, BCC the board? Just so we have, like, so we know what's going to be.
Usually if the draft's prepared, and if that's something that you guys want to look at before we send out, uncomfortable, I mean, I trust you, but just so we know. Absolutely, that it has been sent, so if someone was.
And what was said.
Yeah, you're like, not Courtney Miller's like, no clue what you're talking about. So yeah, keep us, keep us just informed.
Or did you have a, I feel like you were maybe wanting to?
Just something I remember hearing from the community, when communications do come out from the district, do they only come out electronically, or do we also send them in paper form as well?
I think we're mostly using, it depends, well, mostly electronically. I think the referendum would have been the exception. Marcy, is there other other things? I mean, some things come out in paper, but not many.
None of our communication goes out in paper, except for some of the referendum stuff. And I think we're required to mail paper copies of forward exam results.
Yeah.
But other than that. I don't know if registration, does that go out?
It's very little, so it's mostly electronic. And is that something that you're kind of heard?
Yeah, that is an issue. Parts of our community that they simply don't have email, don't have access to it. So a lot of stuff they find out by either word of mouth or participating in certain subgroups. And then it comes up, and they're like, wow, I didn't know about it.
Something we really need to keep, you know, in mind, and I think as we're talking about kind of the overall structures, you know, I think before, we, Verona Press used to cover meetings where we had like a dedicated reporter, everything we ever thought before a table put into paper. But we, you know, we do need to look at that, and I think that is a bigger conversation.
Yes. That's another thing for January. Part of my discomfort has been like, and not being able to go out and communicate myself, because I'm feeling like I'm waiting, so as I don't step on anybody's toes, just go out and talk to people in like formalized settings, we can do more outreach. And so I've been kind of like.
Mary, is there a place where the agenda for the January meeting, like, we're kind of taking notes or aggregating ideas, so we could take notes on things like this and all put them in a common place?
We're kind of just keeping it in mind as we ever need to enter leadership meetings.
Is anyone upset if I like just start a Google Doc?
What can we?
I think we want to make sure that we are not doing a group document.
Oh, that's very, okay, so everybody keep your own Google Doc.
And if I, well, let's go, let's go back. If there's just a good reiteration, especially, you know, with a new board member, if there are things that are, that we want to have on an agenda, on this agenda, on a workshop agenda, email me, call me, text me. And it goes into the, kind of the informal parking lot of ideas, and we then triage. Where is it relevant, where can we best fit it in? Just because it's the first thing that I heard doesn't necessarily mean it gets put on the next agenda. But it's something that Jen and I will work with, you know, Dr. Clarity, to figure out the best place to put it on the agenda. But so, agenda topics, we will manage. Were you going to say something, Jen?
No, I think that's perfect. I know I've talked to you before this meeting where I was like, it was on the agenda, it was on the agenda. And here it is. And so, yes, do that.
Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you for the both confidence in my system.
System works beautifully, even with people like me.
Especially with them. So, okay, and then as we are moving into, you know, the possibility of a board workshop, we're going to need to have some flexibility about times, and we will look to schedule that in the upcoming weeks. So I know we've got a lot going on with, don't look forward, this will be, let's just say that, and then soon to be after that. Was there anything else? So we have, I'm kind of on pause with the communication committee as far as expanding.
Yeah.
But we are on track with where you're at with that to execute. Perfect. John, did you want to give a CISA two update?
I do, I am going to start to try to be more diligent. As some of you know, I am our board representative to CISA two, which is our regional quasi-public, but also quasi-private, but mostly public, educational services agency. We are in region two, CISA two. Typically, you see them do things like driver's ed, and they also support schools providing extra services like services for hearing impaired or other special education services. Anyway, and I'm on the board of control for that group. So we meet once a month, and it occurred to me that often we're leading and talking about things that are usually menial that nobody really needs to know about. But then we're often talking about things that can be important to kind of bring back and say, hey, here's an update on what CISA two does. So I'm doing that now. So this week, or this month rather, every month, every meeting we have a presentation from somebody. They're like a consultant that CISA two employs to work with districts, and I'm bringing ideas into it. And I'm going to be a little bit arrogant. A lot of times these presentations happen, and I'm like, yeah, it's the last year for our district. Our district is really kind of on the cutting edge of a lot of the stuff that they're bringing to places. But every once in a while, they bring in some cool stuff, and so I'm gonna share with you. This month, we got a presentation on 4K. And what was interesting to me is that consultants work with districts kind of throughout our region in providing the different ways that they do 4K. And every district does it a little bit differently. Some do a community-based 4K where they partner with providers in the community. Some places do school-based 4K where they provide all the 4K services in schools. And now there's more of a push towards doing 3K even in some places. Yeah, getting crazy on that. The tension that happens then is that people expect these 4K programs to be more academic in nature. However, the research that says there's a benefit to doing early childhood education, really the benefit comes more from social and emotional development that happens. It isn't necessarily tracked or standardized very well, even though the state of Wisconsin does have learning standards. And in particular, you look at the model standards for early childhood education for the state of Wisconsin, you will notice that they are mostly social and emotional goals, not academic. The goal is not to train kindergartners to read necessarily, it's to train kindergartners to like, share and respect other opinions, do those things so that they can have valuable classroom discussions that then show up in the data by fourth grade about who's reading better. So they look back and they say, well, these kids that did 4K are better readers in fourth grade. That's not necessarily because they learned to read earlier, it's because they were socialized in a school setting earlier. That's an important thing that kind of came up. Admittedly, I brought that in when people were talking about this tension around like how you structure a successful 4K program, because some of them look very successful, but maybe aren't, some of them look successful early on and then not later on. And that's one of the key things that's often lost in this debate. So that was a whole fun discussion around how 4K is provided. I believe our district pursues a community model, where we partner with providers in the community, which allows us a lot more flexibility than if there's a school-based model. Anyway, so that was one big discussion that came up, made me feel good about us. There are districts that are still just offering it for the first time. Just to put that perspective, and there are a lot of districts that are not able to afford to offer it enough.
Offering community-based or offering 4K period?
Yeah, because, so what happens is, you're reimbursed from the state, point six of a student for your 4K, and now you're 3K too if you do it. So it's actually, they're not reimbursed as a full student, so the economics for making that program work aren't necessarily always there. Because the reimbursements from the state are really low, because you only get point six for each student. So, so a lot of smaller communities won't offer it because it's not there. But like that now, it's the case where smaller communities are losing their childcare centers, so there's no childcare options. And districts are having to step up and provide a 4K or even a 3K, because there's no childcare in that community, and kind of take the budgetary hit.
I would love a legislator, sorry, just to, I'd love a legislator to hang out with a four-year-old and tell me that you should reimburse that person point six. Like, it should be like one point six. Four-year-olds have all the energy and all, then none of the focus.
Well, it's interesting, because that feeds into this debate, or this kind of fallacy that develops, where when people provide a service, they want to measure that they're getting something out of it. And they typically want those measures to be academic in nature. And that's not what works at this level. And so it becomes, you know, when you look at it, you know, like, well, they're playing most of the time. And what DPA structures, what CISA two provides is consulting around play-based 4K, which is, which is actually a, probably a better model, because it's more social and emotional in nature. This is going way longer than I wanted to. This is going way longer than I wanted to, but you're asking. So anyway, so then, you know, the budget, I'm sure the budget debate gets to be about like, well, they're playing most of the time. It's a point six because they're not doing like academic rigorous stuff. And then this also plays into achievement gap issues because what historically has happened is when you recognize that students are falling behind, tendency is to say, okay, we're going to provide this service, but we're going to measure the hell out of it. And it's become this really structured, rigorous form of education that's like worksheets all the time and staged curriculum. And here it is. And that's not what leads to better learners. And so the tension is about how do we provide this and not overdo it? Anyway, that all came out in this presentation. I sent a copy of the presentation. Anyway. The other thing that I wanted to get to, the reason I was getting here, is that one of the highlights they wanted is how CC two is starting to use street data as their model for all of their training with districts. And they're in-house training as well about how to look at data. And so this is another area where I'm like, ah, that's the last month for our district because we've already kind of gotten on that. And then when I sent this in, I noted that they had modeled after some other districts that have been doing this for a year or more and have some more experience in how that street data model works. It's like really good cutting edge stuff that kind of captures more of the qualitative and real world things that are happening that get lost in the numbers. And so, yeah, so it's really cool to kind of see that this is this thing that we talked about two or three months ago in one of our presentations here is now top of people kind of seeming like this cutting edge thing. And we're, you know, thanks to the administrative team here, ahead of the curve on that. And some of the stuff that comes out of that book, if you haven't had a chance to read your book yet, there's some really cool and good stuff. When I pipe up in our OE reports and I'm like, I would really like to hear a story more. I would really like qualitative data more. That's what this speaks to is kind of getting those real stories out of that. So hooray us. That was the point of this update. Sorry if I got a little sidetracked.
John, did you share that CC presentation with all the board?
The 4K one, yeah. It was just a slideshow, so it might seem a little bit, or no, I sent it to you. So maybe it's in, maybe it's in Vortex. It's certainly public through the CC website, I think, but it should be. But it's going to, it's just slides, so it might seem a little bit more scattered than my narrative would indicate. And then the last thing was that CC is working on developing health provider partnerships around nursing with smaller districts in particular across the region. And that they're trying to find innovative ways to do that. And that might be something that we might want to keep an eye on is how we can find partnerships to better provide health services. But again, our district is on it and usually way ahead of the curve on this. So that's been really great to see.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate it. I was going to, before we close out board action, I just wanted to circle back to one quick thing. When we're talking about moving forward and how we communicate with the community, remember we have a whole section of policies about the board of governing, I can't think of any words. It is apparently after seven o'clock, it's like Cinderella at seven o'clock, I turn into a pumpkin, I can't talk. We have our governing commitments. That's what, make sure that if you, if you have questions, I want everyone to make sure that they read those, those we need to know inside and out because that just tells us how we communicate with the public. It tells us our role. It tells us what we, you know, so we're not stepping on toes because it delineates our responsibilities between our board and our, our administration. And I think that's where we have had such success, but we want to keep that respect because clearly it is resonating with the community in ways that are very, very beneficial. Okay, with that said, moving on to public comment with our massive amount of people here. I'm shocked, no comment tonight. We have our superintendent consent agenda. Are there any questions about the consent agenda? And if not, hearing none, consent agenda has been approved as presented. We have a board consent agenda. Are there any questions about the board consent agenda?
Is there a problem that there are no interview workshop minutes attached? Or is it just more of a notice in board docs that that occurred?
It's attached with previous section.
Yeah, it's just up one.
Ah, okay.
We're good.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
So any questions about that? In hearing none, board consent agenda has been approved as presented. Future agenda items, we already heard about our future meetings. So we've covered that. Next one is on December 5th. And then keep in mind with December, it's not, we have the 5th and then right away, then the 12th. Then you get a break. Okay, that said, keep those in mind. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? A motion from Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Jen. All in favor, signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all so much. Thank you to administration. Please enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday. A break is all.
Well deserved.
Always welcome, Meredith.
Thank you.
I would be like.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just saying, that's why I've been object to adjourn.
Well, that's good.